This conference will now be recorded.
Maybe with this one we can't.
Yeah, I think this may be after this one. I mean, you should call for it. I'm not agenda item. You know, or I don't know what's in.
I think we should just get through these couple things.
Okay.
But I'll let the participation on the on-call planning get through. Got it. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the on-call planning. The Cushing Terrell. And then where this is starting to come from with a little background. Alex has been doing a lot of this work for us. What I'm afraid of is we're going to wear out our welcome. He claims that he hasn't or won't, but I think for the future of the town, we need to have someone established and making sure they're working exclusively for us. So that's where this has come from is the Cushing. They've got a great background. I know they worked for several towns, Belgrade being one that's the closest to us, I think, isn't it? I'm pretty sure. But we need to have them with the amount of projects that we've got coming in. We need to have someone that's working for us and is able to focus all their energies on us, where Alex has got the whole county to deal with. And he's always there for us to be able to pull back on. He's done an incredible job helping us get to where we are. But I feel like this is something where we need to move forward with some establishment for. When we bring these guys on, I'm sorry, just as I'm going. They would be, as we have projects come in is when they would go in. They're doing our master plan now, so they're already going to be familiar with the direction that we're going as far as what we're looking for. And then as the plan or the projects come in, then they can jump on and attack those as well. Plus, they can help us with our zoning, get that all squared away, whether it be vortex amendments or if they choose to, and we want them to attack the new zoning all the way together. You know, so many options and things that we can do with them. Just I think it's the way to go.
And would Cushing Terrell be the one we choose? Are they one of the people that would do the on-call planning?
Yes. Should we call for a motion before we start discussion? Or should we just be able to discuss it ahead of time?
Should call for the motion.
Okay, let's call a motion before we start a discussion, then we can talk all we want.
I move to approve on-call planning services for the fiscal year 21, '22 for the town.
And that's it? Thank you. Now talk all you want. I just wanted to review the question properly.
So, Lee, how many RFPs did the town send out for proposals from planners? And how many responses did you get?
We did not send out for, we chose these guys specifically because of the master plan. When a project is under $50,000, you do not have to put it out to bid.
Right.
And this one, it falls under that.
So you won't pay them more than $50,000 in a year for any planning services?
No, that's set up that way. Depending on, I mean, if it got to a point where we got bombarded where we couldn't, I think that there's potential that it would, but it would come in front of the council before anything ever happened.
Does that funding include the money that you've already committed to them? Or is that separate?
That will be a separate. Because the master plan has already been funded.
Right, but if it's in a calendar year, and anything...
It's a fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Or a fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
Yes. And our new fiscal year will be starting here in the next month or so.
And I believe the grant that we had through Montana means you, the master planning program, is a separate line item. Then this makes sense in the budget. That's a separate line item. And that, I don't know, some of that may have, depending on the invoices that have already paid out. The town was only responsible for one quarter of the cost of the master plan. So, and the rest was covered by grants. And it's a, and how, I don't know what it's been billed out already of those. And some of those invoices have already been paid. And some of that administration of paying invoices runs through headwaters as well.
Or everything is left within waters.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so it's a separate line item, separate project than this.
Mr. Mayor? Will there be a written scope of work outlining what the town is actually contracting for and individual estimates of cost for each line item scope of work so we can track it? Do you have a written scope of work in mind?
Yes, we have it in mind. We don't have it on paper yet. But we wanted to get it passed through here so we can get them going where we've got the project. But yes, that will be there and available for everyone to see.
Will the written scope of work be available before you actually finalize the budget?
Yes.
I think before a contract would be signed with the mayor, the scope of work would be...
Yeah, the scope, the contracts are contracts. It's the scope of work that we can expect them to perform for the monies that are being spent.
Yes.
And they submitted, so right now, one of the things that's on our sheets here is development of permit review for variances, application questions. One of the things I'd like to add on to there is conditional use permits in form of applications updates. When it comes to subdivisions, they will help review preliminary and final plots, family transfers, exemptions, pre-application meetings and application questions, planning board administration, identification of annexations of existing utility users, outside-town boundaries, coordinate with county planning, development of code review and update, which is establish planning process and schedule review, public input and implementation of code update, identify priorities for code updates, and then general planning support for the town council. So that is where we could also get a list of these before that is implemented as well. So, we'll publish those pieces. So then that way, I think one of the biggest things is that we currently don't have a licensed planner. And it's obvious right now that we need one. And so, and it's going to be a simple, and what their plan is to build us a foundation and so then we can take it over from them. They're going to help us straighten out our forms, our administration, our processes so it's easier for builders, whether you're building a fence, you're building a single-family home. Right now, our code is a little bit convoluted and so, and it has been. It's been just imperfect. And so, to help it make it more user-friendly on both sides, not only for people coming into town looking to build stuff or whether it be single-family homes or businesses or whatever, so it's just clearly defined. And I think having, these folks are really working really hard to understand the community and our needs with the different, and they're gathering lots of data. And so I think they're going to get a really good feel for the community and help the town council, you know, make recommendations to them. So, they won't make any decisions upon themselves at all past this year.
To the question, what is, is this leading to calling planning away from the county so that the planning responsibility falls to the town?
No, we need the, our planning needs to be part of the town. It should be part of the county. We ran into a problem as a lot of you have been here. We got steamrolled a little bit and we were a small town and we're growing very rapidly. We're kind of chasing our tail trying to get everything caught back up. And that's where this comes in line. This probably should have been put in line five, six years ago. Some of us have already said, so we were kind of chasing our tail. We need to get this so we've got control of what's going on again.
And the county, just to expand on that, what the county does for us now, based on our interlocal agreement, is they review conditional use permits and have a planning board meeting. Anna has a representative on the county planning board. We do not have our own planning board. And the reason for that was several years ago, we could never sustain, the state requires seven members to that planning board. We were never able to sustain that. And so, and wouldn't have a quorum for multiple times. I think Larry, you were the mayor at that time. And so, we decided it was best to put a representative on the county planning board. And I think there's good things that have came out of that. Now, I think there's more communication between the county and the town. And I think Lee was right in that, you know, it's been a lot, you know, where before we would get an occasional conditional use permit or whatever, but I think there's several in line right now looking to do that. And so that does take a lot of effort. And then to also have our own representation as well and not just the county. Alex has done a tremendous job, but, you know, his first and foremost is the county's interest. And so we kind of need to have someone for the town's interests as well.
Second question is, some of the things that you talked about that Cushing Terrell will be responsible for are sound pretty similar to what they're proposing in the envision-Annis plan.
As far as...
Code revision, right? So they're pushing, their recommendation is this happens, and at the same time, they're working with you all to say, we'll do this for you.
Well, I think what it is, is they're, so our code does need revision. As far as just in our formatting position, the stuff isn't cross-referenced to each other. So it can be a bit of a bear to, it's not very user-friendly. So that's what they need as far as a code update or a note. Look, we do have a draft update and to look at that, see if that matches when the master plan is put out together from hearing the community input of what the community wants. And then how you take that from the community wants and then put it into policies that actually reflect what the community wants. And so that's what they're looking to do. And whether we do, like, we have some text amendments that came up that were recommended from the county planning board already. So should we just do a series of text amendments? Or should we go ahead and do a reforming, kind of an overhaul to the code update?
So at least of the recipe lists that you called up, those tasks, that scope of work is being done under the per-hour new contract or the grantman?
This would be under the hourly new contract. So the scope of work was to do a master plan. It was not to do zoning, rewrite under that.
But within the master plan zoning falls.
Yeah, so they're making recommendations, as far as the master plan, they would make recommendations. So, guess what, Dr. Heckler?
This is sort of a chicken and egg question. But if you had seven volunteers to start a planning group for the town, would it be possible to get those seven members together and work in parallel for a while with the county planning so we could accelerate bringing planning back to the town as soon as we ran parallel for a little bit? But it starts with if you have seven, as I understand. I believe you can have seven now. And I think if you call for them, you...
If they didn't have to live in town.
They do have to live within the planning jurisdiction.
That's pretty true.
Well, if they don't have to live in town, the planning district is one mile surrounding the town. So they have to live within that planning jurisdiction. Yeah, so, but I think getting a planning board back to, and when I spoke to some legislatures that were doing a listening session in Sheridan a few weeks ago, one of the things, or, you know, they were talking about dogs and whatever. And they're like, well, what can we do to you or do for you? And I said, the one thing you can do is, you know, make a tiered system for planning boards based on, you know, class of town. So hopefully, we can see that in the legislature that, you know, if you have, if your class C town, you need three members of your B, you go up to five or whatever. Just because I think Sheridan is struggling with that too. But I would love to see a planning, enact a planning board back in Annis.
Does the, would the licensed planner replace a planning board? Or do they work in conjunction with the planning board?
They work in conjunction with the planning board.
So you need both?
Yeah, you would need both. They would, it would be like the licensed planner would be, you know, like the superintendent or, you know, the executor of that, the executive position of that, so.
Two things with that, what was interesting with what Lisa was saying in Sheridan was the legislature did not know that these towns could, or had to have seven. That was kind of a blind side them a little bit. They were unaware that a town on the side would need seven, the same as the Bozeman would need seven or any of the other bigger towns, which is interesting. And another thing that we have to keep in mind with a planning board is they are a recommendation board. Ultimately, the county commission makes it, they write, fill out a report for us, do all the background work and bring it to the commission to make the decisions, where the commission then can ask the questions of trained people that know what... Because a lot of times, we will be sitting in here and we're asking questions and none of us know the answer to them. Or these people will know the answers when we start asking the questions. Because we've all been sitting in these meetings a lot where we'll ask a question and no one can answer. That's really...
Gosh. I have just a question on the functionality. So if you do hire a planner, is the county going to continue to review that as well until you form your own planning board here?
I think we would want them to, so you have another set of eyes, more sets of eyes on things. A lot of the times, especially with Alex's group, are, they're really good on the details. I would rather have more eyes on it so we have as much input as we can and get the most amount of information to these guys to make proper decisions.
So you're basically going to have two planners reviewing everything until you have a planning board?
Yes. So what the master plan is.
Well, yeah, I think that, like, if a commissionary's permit came in, Cushing Terrell or the planning board would review it. And then it would go to the county planning board. But Alex doesn't necessarily have to write the staff report.
Okay.
And it would still go through, it would still get a public hearing with the planning board because that's what we have available until we can get our own established and then, yeah.
So you're reducing his load?
Yeah, reducing his load. Because right now, he's writing the staff reports on those types of things. So we would then call on the firm to do that, so. You know, and before it was like occasionally we would get one, but we had several applications. And so, and like, like I said, we don't want to wear out our welcome.
We're paying him or the county to do those services for us currently, or is it...
Well, we have an interlocal agreement right now.
So if any of that would be permit fees, I think...
Like, if they're reviewing a subdivision, do these go to the county?
So they do make some of it? So that would be a revenue stream for us to pay Cushing Terrell? Yes.
Well, to help offset the cost, some of those fees would help offset the cost.
And there's, when we get into our work session, there's a couple of things that have come to light that would be interesting too. So let's stay with this. Any other comments or anyone else have any questions? Okay, then we'll call for a vote.
Hi.
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 Okay, I'll just call Chris last, okay. I'm going to go ahead, motion passes, and then I will call her. What do you guys need to do in adjourn for the actual regular meeting?
Let's adjourn.
Second.
Cory?
Hi.
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 Okay. Lisa?
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
I had the floor, I was good. Okay, now we'll go into work session.
Are we going to do a public comment?
Does anyone have any public comment on agenda items? Okay, now, like Ginger said, we're gonna, this is a discussion only. We're going to start talking about some of these things that are few issues here that we need to work out so we can get them on an agenda and work through them. The private wells within town limits have become an issue now because we've been allowing wells to be drilled in town. And what's happening is these wells are hitting our town water supply and the water's going down quite rapidly right now. So we've got to really work on this. We've had a lot of conversation with Joel Davis. And just in wells in general, wells are running dry all over the place right now. And we've got to make sure they're maintained. So this was one of the things we're looking at is stopping the drilling of wells in town limits, private wells. Comments?
What about the existing wells? Are they all restricted?
We have not done any restrictions. I know there's a lot of areas that have done restrictions. That might be something that we need to look at. But to stop the irrigation wells that pop up in a lot of places.
I'd like to hear from Kelly.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm in the process of having a hydrogeological study done because we need another well with the way it is. We're doing well now. We have the capacity reports. You can see that everything is okay. But, you know, down the road, it's not going to be, we need another well. So with this hydrogeological study, we will find out where we might get water. And then, of course, the big thing is, is where do we get the land to drill the well? So it's going to be quite a process. It is in the works. We probably won't see the task order until next week. But you'll have something to work with there. And it, really, whatever the task work is, it's going to be pretty much a yes. We need to, we need to do it. So that's just for our wells, but for our third well, our wells are actually doing okay. And when you talk about the wells in town, none of those wells are supposed to be deeper than 30 feet. Probably some are because they weren't following regulations back in the time when they were drilled. But, you know, if you really think about what's starting our aquifer, this golf course and north of town coming this way. So anyway, it's going to be, it's going to be your decision. But do we want to penalize the people in the town of Annis when it's everybody else taking the water from us? How bad? I'd recommend not doing anything until we have the hydrogeological study. And it's only a discussion anyway, so we're not going to do anything different. But, you know, it's kind of like, well, I got my well and you can't have one neither, neither. But Sheridan did it, well, it's been about 14 years ago. Sheridan did it. A lot of towns do it. Towns do have the ability to, by ordinance, make an ordinance that says people within the city limits cannot drill well. So that's really all they got unless somebody has questions.
Kelly, does the ground water management plan, does State of Montana have ground water management plan? Well drawn out, home drawn out influence between what?
That is, that is all handled with the D N R C. And it's probably more than they can really handle.
But it is, yeah.
It's, it's, it's... The words are written, yeah, the words are written. It is in place. But the workforce may not be there to enforce it. And like, people like Joel Davis, who has good information, or Chuck Graham, or they'll keep drilling, all the drillers, you know, it's not really in their favor to go to D N R C and say, we're running out of water. So it's more up to D N R C to do their job.
But if there is influence from one well to the other on drawdown?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely makes a difference. And then what D N R C would do with, say, if there's three wells, it'd be the one with the oldest water, right? Their well will be fine and then they have to cut off, cut off the other two. But that's kind of, that part is kind of out of our control.
So all newer wells are junior to senior rights?
Oh, definitely, junior, right, yeah.
You can, you can go back in retrospect and limit the newer wells over the, I'll call it the grandfather wells that have been here since 1930.
Okay, the other thing, and I don't know if I mentioned it or not, but a well drilled within the city limits can only produce 30 gallons a minute. And if somebody can't put in a high-production well and go down, like, our wells are 80 feet and 120 feet, they can't go down to our aquifer. It's not our, but go down to that aquifer and start sucking water that would, you know, hopefully, there's a difference between that 30 feet that they can drill and the 80 to 120, whatever feet a swell is. So, yeah, but it really lies on D N R C. And hopefully, that'll be, not hopefully, we'll make it a part of our hydrogeological study.
So Kelly, should we not, with this one, should we not start the process of limiting this water just because of the projects we've got coming up? We've got big projects. Annexations are always possible at these other places. But we've got three pretty good-sized projects in here that are going to suck up what we already, we do currently have. Is this not something that we should be proactive on?
Well, it's obviously going to be proactive, but again, we're talking at 30-feet wells. Are they really influencing the town's water sources? Yeah, I'd like to say, I was against it in Sheridan. But, you know, it's like, I have a well in my house. John has a well. How come we can have wells but my neighbor can't? Yeah, at some time, and how many, I'll tell you the other thing. You call up Chuck Graham, Graham's drilling, and he can't drill your well for two more years. He's booked that far ahead. I don't know how Joel's doing. They'll keep, you know, I don't know. But these guys are busy. The hydrogeological study, hopefully, it'll be done in a couple of months. And go ahead, yeah.
So, Lee, all these projects that are coming in, they're going to tap into the city water? Potentially, yes. Well, two of them for sure, with the school and the hospital for sure. And then those...
So if they're not having the city, then you should limit them to the rural ones?
If, if the commission believes that stopping wells in the town that are normally 30 feet deep will really help your situation, then I think that's sort of a false, you know, rule. The rule will limit the drilling of shallow wells. The shallow wells are not a drawdown. Which is not, they're usually going to have a current hydrogeologic report. I'm pretty sure, I haven't, you know. The interconnection of the shallow aquifer and the aquifer, cities, municipal wells, it's they're virtually no, if you know connectivity. So if you're trying to just limit local wells that are 30 feet plus, it really won't have an effect on the town's water supply.
Yeah, there are some other wells that are right outside city limits that are much deeper than 30 feet.
They're the best...
I guess my question is, is when, say Chuck Graham, I don't know if it's a town, does he know that he's got a limit of 30 feet?
Yes. Yeah, if he, yeah, if he goes deeper than that, he's licensed, he loses license for doing it. It's your own thing, yeah, no, I don't think he would do that.
Is it 30 feet from your grave?
Yes, from the grave. So what I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure, but I believe it's from the grave.
If you're as lower, then technically it'd be the road and you're up on the bench.
Um, yeah, probably a different aquifer, please, so.
I think the influence of the flow of the river encapsulation. But your issue is when the bigger wells being drilled outside of the town limits, the hydrogeologic report should address that too, one of the things.
And this will ultimately be the commission, sorry, go ahead. Like this is, to kind of continue on, then if you, all these wells in town are all for irrigation?
Correct. Oh, they have to be, yeah, they cannot be so bad with the house. And actually, where the business is selling water. So if you, if you said no more wells, it'd be in common purpose town. But I feel a little different than that. But so not only could be used for irrigation.
So my point is, if you've got an already potentially stressed water supply, limiting these smaller wells for irrigation might be detrimental instead of beneficial for your.
I'd, I'd agree with that, other than where the business is selling water. Yeah, I agree.
But okay, now it's gonna go further. But the, my opinion is if we don't do something with this, this is gonna be my zone. We need to be proactive on something like this. And ultimately, it will be your guys' decision. We need to be proactive. Right now, it's not a problem, but down the road, it is a problem. Many municipalities already have this rule in place. We're way behind the trend on this. I think we need to tackle it before it does become an issue. You guys are saying it's not an issue now, but I don't know what is gonna, five years down the road, just like with our zone, we didn't, we kind of could see it out there. But now we're in a problem. So rather than waiting until there is a problem, maybe hurtill it ahead of time. Again, when this comes up on your guys', consideration, it'll be up to you what you choose to do. So I thank everyone for their comments, it's important.
Could we couple this with, in a, with the rural water? When they do a presentation, I think.
I'm sorry, that's a second.
Can we couple this with rural water? When they come to do rate restructuring and everything like that, can we ask them? Obviously, they would have a call about that.
The person we get for the rate structuring probably is, is gonna be all that, all that. I think we need to leave the rate structuring separate, a little more with the hydro geological study. And then use, use rural water if they can and when they can. But this is a step in, you know, they're, they're very respectful. Very well, we pay them with very little and they're willing to come and help. But I don't, I wouldn't say that's their expertise.
Okay, okay. And with rural water, I think it was, I happened to call their member, the guy named Bobby. We just need to get, get on their schedule, can we work that out? I think she was on vacation when I called, but can we get that?
Yeah, and the guy that we had before when we were gonna do this three months ago or whenever, he doesn't work for them anymore. And I kinda went, they're going through some employee changes, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of an issue that we would regulate itself because with the limiting the depth, we start getting the water table and people's wells aren't gonna be pouring any water. So you know, if that becomes a problem that we don't have water, then they just can't get any water. Maybe we should put less of a depth on the wells instead of just outright adding them.
And that will be your consideration. How many wells, irrigation wells have been drilled in town in the last?
Oh, in the last few years, probably six, very few, but there's.
In town, this is in.
Yeah, well, just as we said.
Those were, it was for irrigation, that's why they put those in?
That's the only way they can use them.
I'm just trying to figure out the financial math, I mean, we're gonna spend.
I know, yeah, I mean.
I don't understand, I'm trying to think if there's another reason or where people are getting off. Or maybe if you build really well, it'll get an action. Yeah, I think in the city sewer, we're limited. It doesn't seem to make sense to spend, I don't know, $40, $50, $50 a foot, probably? So $15,000 to irrigate along? I don't, no, I'm not, I'm asking, what is, what was some of these people's reasons for doing it?
I, I'm with you.
I don't, I can't really.
My, my wells there, most, most of these were there. And when I said six, that was probably an exaggeration. But I, you know, the church across Mar.
Yeah, the Baptist church, that one, that one just went in like two, three years ago. And that was probably one, I mean, do we have an ordinance? I was trying to look it up, like your model can't be within X amount of the distance between, to a town well? Would that make a difference?
I don't think we have that. I never thought that DNRC would have, would have thought that because that one was real close. But again, again, the 30 feet compared to the depth of our well.
All right, and these checkerboard, you know, county plots up here. Are any of those people allowed to drill wells or is it part of, is it part of the donut, so to speak? You know, there's seven, eight, 10, 15 homes up here right up here.
From Harvard.
They're, they're in the county.
Oh, they're in the county, I would know. Some of it, you know, it was interesting, and Kelly, you probably have a better, some of them have water, some of them have sewers, some of them have water and sewer, and some of them have stuff.
I think some of those.
That we're trying and they're overriding it, that Conley addition that.
That was supposed to be all squared away a long time ago.
It's one way, it's just being squared away.
But I think they have, when we drill a well for domestic uses, it has to be a certain distance away from all of that kind of stuff. So I think that probably.
And the same thing with the second, but those people chose not to be part of the town. Well, they went with the original plans. It was supposed to be, it didn't happen, that's gone away. But the ones, and when you say checkerboarding, those people that do have our services is because theirs failed and it was easy to hook onto ours. But some of them on the middle of that, theirs hasn't failed. So they don't need us. When they need us, then all of a sudden they want to annex and hook on. So I don't see that happening fast, but it'll, it'll definitely happen at some point.
The people know that, they'll give you the respect.
They should not, our county's sanitary. If there is, and they have regulations that, if they're so close to a public sewer system, and I think the cost is like three times, if it costs more than three times to hook up at the city, then you don't have to do it. But if it's less than three times, dollar amount, you have to hook up at the city.
So except, there are a couple of properties over there that are not annexed, annexed in, but use public water sewer. What do we get, do we?
The only one I know of is, is Long.
Okay.
We, we, D and D's City.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Well, the car wash.
So it's, so it's D and D. I believe if you look it up on the national.
I don't think it is, it's not.
Yeah, it is not.
It is not, I think maybe the, the car wash portion is, but it's right around the corner. I think that was what Naomi did, that big, she and Cherry did that big report on the Conley addition. And what happened was is they voted to become part of Ennis. What they were doing when they did the survey was by means and balance. They left off a whole paragraph. And so then it wasn't included as part of the annexation.
The entire shop is annexed.
Yeah, so I think it, I think that's another question. Do those folks like the lawn remats? If there's more out, like they're like the lawn remat, they should be annexed in.
With them, because it's happened years ago and what happened on a weekend in nighttime, maybe? That, what could happen there is a forced annexation? But that gets into a lot of money and, you know, the new owner maybe, may want to actually, he may be forced to because the lot next to the Madisonian, they just did voluntary annexation, which was a pretty easy process. Ginger helped them through it. So that voluntary annex so that they could use the city water and sewer. Once you're surrounded.
Surrounded, yeah.
Then, then they can force amendment.
Well, that could be almost all by our rate structure too. That if we do our ratings, that if you are not annexed into the town, there is a server charge based on that, so.
That'd be part of the restructuring. And, and maybe with the new owner at the lawn remat, he may be willing to do voluntary annexations. You know, we don't have anybody to go ask to do that.
Yeah, because it was, you know, it was the town and Ennis tax payers that helped with the system. And so, and I know there's a user.
Well, that's actually a user.
Well, users, but initially went in two, right?
No, it's separate from that, these water sewers.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
You know what, well.
Well, to me, you know, it's like, I remember, I think you said, talking about it, there's a lot of words you're thinking about writing and doing about limiting wells and stuff. But the actual effect of the town, you know, when you think about an hour or two, look at how many fixture units D and D has. You go in the bathroom, you know they have two. So there's a lot of words, but truly, the town's gonna end up surrounding these little islands and they will go away with time. And I'm like, well, it's just, it's inevitable.
Yeah, the, the D and D has its own step. And this is way before me, but they went to the extent of taking the water line and calmly blocked down and blocked the other way. The points, well, I, I think that's where the original car wash was, is they needed the, they needed the volume.
But the D and D town, which has a lot of, that's a high water, there are any. These are, yeah. But the little ones, little islands here and there, of the land were great.
So if there's more homes with the hydro geological survey?
That's why I ended up.
Yeah. I was gonna say, when I had my own, my wife was blowing about 60,000 gallons of water home, trying to make the grass green. And I said, you know, if we dug a well, we could pay the work for years, is what we did. And knowing that, you know, we can only use, only use it for irrigation, period. Nothing for the household with any waste performance, never has been. But my biggest, biggest problem of all, and I know it's coming down the road whether you like it or not, is we have to be online with the state and our water and sewer. Now, I don't know if this is a fact, perhaps you can tell me. Dennis repaired a house in Sheridan for his mother to move into. The basic hookup, the basic hookup, without using any water or sewer, for a month, was $90 a month.
It's even higher now. Yeah, when I, when I, when I, 30, whatever, many years it was, Ennis was the highest rating for water and sewer in the county. Sheridan was the lowest, but they, Sheridan and then Wood Bridges, Virginia City, they had to do a lot of projects. Anyway, right now, Ennis has the lowest rating in the county.
But the point is, we have to, we have to come online with the state's regulations on sewer and water.
Okay, yeah, and it's not regulation, not to correct you, but it's not regulation. We have to meet the target rates that the Department of Commerce set out for us. And that will go with this rate structuring that we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, but you know, in order to get grants, if something happens to the sewer or water, we're not, maybe forget grants because we are not online with the state.
Yeah, you're pretty correct there, you know, it goes to the market. Anyway, it's very important, what you're saying, John, is yes, I mean, you need people to start early.
But I tell you, the people are relentless when they find out how much the rates are gonna go up. Because I mean, just for my wife and myself, ours average is about $60 a month.
She's in Madison County.
It's, it's gonna go to the root.
Oh, I didn't say that.
Well, say something, give us, give us an idea.
I'd say it'll go up, and you've seen the report, what are we down like 20%? 20% of, $60, $12, yeah, I don't know, maybe, no, it's not gonna go sky high.
Well, I think our biggest mistake, and I've been mulling about it for years, is when you go to the people and you raise the water and sewer rates a little bit at a time, they're gonna say nothing. But when you hit it with a biggie, they're gonna come after you. And there not be enough from them. There not be enough from them. And I really feel that this is a project that needs to be addressed. And bring us online to what the state requires.
Okay, and non-acquired, yes.
Target. Target.
That's what I heard, that you wanted to talk.
Target.
Okay, and I think we deal with that when we get rural water here.
Yes, that's just a side note.
One other thing, isn't it, isn't it a town ordinance that you, in order to be able to put a well in, you have to have a hundred foot radius around that well?
I'm not familiar with that.
I've never heard of that.
Do you have that information?
No.
Yeah, I'm pretty not familiar with it.
They're the county.
Oh, that's interesting.
For municipal wells, I don't know if it's a maybe, but I don't know about private.
I think it might apply that if there was a second tank close to you, you have to be a certain distance away from the well, you know, from the second tank. Everybody around me is on city water sewers, so there are no second tanks.
We got, we got an old golf course up there full of second tanks. That water comes this way. Not now, 40 years from now, it's gonna be a problem.
Well, maybe golf course, you know, they have, they have their watering machine that goes around, it's not too dangerous. Well, you're nice, and you're prescribed a water, if you're allowed to. And if you go over that day, he's gonna nail you.
Yeah, I'm not worried about their water, I'm not worried about much sewer. I'm worried about, I'm worried about anybody, anyway.
Okay, so we'll, obviously, while we're working side by side, anything, anyway, just to first thought on that topic. Okay, let's move on to zoning.
Actually, I'd like to move to street bonds next. Cause I don't know what I have, the time I hit this zone, I mean, that's, there's something I wanna talk about. The street bond is the one I wanna go to next. Right now, our issue is, we have a 500, and Kelly, you know, with this, as we're going, we have a $500 street bond. And there's a confusion as to whether or not people need to fix these things. Kelly's got a different opinion on this as we're going. Most cities have a $5,000, which is what usual, the 5,000 of those is the one we're looking at. But we're actually, the problem we're having right now is people are tearing our roads up that are not fixed. We've got three on Otis right now. And rather than fix them, they're just abandoning their bond. But we're looking at this a little bit and it's possible that they're misreading that. Can you go a little bit further into that?
Yeah, well, I don't think that, you know, and Sheridan, there was no street bond or anything. If you tore up the street, any piece of person, you tear up the street, you fix us back to how it was is better. I mean, that's, that's, to me, that's just common sense. Whoever put it, and you go back through the minutes, you will never see where that $500 bond was in the minutes. It was just somebody filling out a form and people took advantage of it. And to me, they're really taking advantage of it now. But Brittany brought up, checked into Bozeman's street bond. And if this is what we have to do to make these developers be honest, then this is what we're gonna have to do. But right now, we've got developers taking advantage of us. And I think I have a solution, we'll see, and. And I think I have a solution, we'll see, and just for your information, Josh, one of the conditions that I requested for the Phase Six of the North Forty was that the previous streets will be fixed, would be for final brutal Phase Six. So, so I've given that to Alex, I don't know if we're, hopefully, the planning board will agree with it, and I don't know if the commission will agree with it, but that's the conditions that I put on Phase Six of, that was a suggestion that I put on Phase Six of the North Forty, was to fix previous cuts and guys, because, well, you know. And I think the developers, and I'm not pointing you, you're not the only developer there, they're trying to take advantage of something that was still written. And any decent developer would do the right thing.
To Josh's, to Josh's credit, I call that he is actually trying to work with the contractors and landlords to help us get them, so it's not, he's not just.
Of course.
And it's not just in the North Forty.
No, this is where it's very, I mean, I'm making complaints about the North Forty game, because if you drive over that, if you don't get that right, you're bothering your car out. When it rains, but we haven't gotten that, but when you get, you get the rain and it's not flowing right because the weather's gone, the curbing's gone, it causes giant puddles in the middle of the road, it's a mess, and it's not what we inherited. We inherited really good drawn-out roads, and right now, we don't have that. We don't do something about this now, it's become a problem everywhere, and we see it right next to, into justice there.
I mean, just turn their water off.
It's all hard to answer.
I think the North Forty was coming, coming out of order that you would put in a sewer water for two rats to be annexed. And that the sewer lines and water line ran up to, up to the edge of the property, then it was the property owners to get it into the house. And when yours was set up, there would be no need to tear up the street because you already had it to the curb, is that true?
That was the original plan, yes.
But it's not being adhered to.
Well.
Yeah.
And also, that was the other recommendation on Phase Six of the North Forty. My other recommendation was the new lots that are gonna be part of that subdivision that each lot, the water and sewer will be stuffed into each lot.
Yeah, but I thought that was from the beginning.
Well, Phase Five, it kind of misses on Phase Five.
But the thought was, was we would allow people to do it as they built out, because that property was not a container, so the family, when we first developed it, we thought it would be larger condominium units, so it only needed one service every few hundred feet. That then become a pass, so it's, you know, become necessary now to get into this to tie in the water and sewer for these projects. Thinking on the Phase Five was that people would just tie in, patch it back, and we never thought we'd have an issue with it. So, even Kelly and Mrs. Gus doing this on Phase Six, I don't know if she's doing it. And I'm likely to be happy at all, get these patched back and all, I've already made several phone calls to be able.
I think it's worse than doing it, you just ask, so.
I think I'd be careful, though, just because, you know, Josh's developer today, pretty quick, twenty-four, thirty-six months, whatever, he will have been the developer, he will own none of those lots. And so now, it's not really, at that point, it's not, and if you can, if you can see that if the economy goes to hell, Josh sells those lots, it's all these new homeowners, and they all have to dig in. Whether it's, I'm not, I'm not, you know, in case I'm saying that. So, in the beginning, you need to get out of the developer's case to just make sure it's stubbed out properly, but if there is, you can understand, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, you can understand that he's gonna be gone, and there's gonna be a homeowner that is going to dig into the road and tear it up, and that person needs to be responsible. Josh, at that point, in my opinion, is not responsible. Like, I have lots that I probably will build on for a year, or five years, and that's not gonna be Josh's responsibility. I'm saying the individual needs to be responsible, you need to keep pressure on the individual because Josh will be gone, and then, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes total sense, so I guess, let me get a handle on what our current policy is. I have the Bozeman one, I have it pulled up here, so I guess, can we just, do you wanna go with expensive? It's what, I mean, there's, technically, it's long, I mean, we need to go that expensive?
Well, there's a lot of that can be taken off, obviously, but, yeah, it has to be strong enough that these developers want their money back and fix the road as soon.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, and there are, you know, there's stuff on Third Street, there's stuff on Ennis Street from, you know, twelve years ago, that is still a major drift that they never repaired it from, not how they put it to the street, but when they, they stuff it with sewers. So, I am for that, as well as there may be two, and maybe this is something we could put Jim on, or maybe even our online planning services to develop, to develop this permanent application that we.
Well, the application really needs to be done by owners, which takes a couple of months. The thing that we can do is if they wanna, if they wanna play games with us, we'll play games with them, and not allow any.
Well, that was what I was saying, is if they're not in compliance with their current building permits, they don't get another one, or there's nothing, they have to be in compliance to get, does that make sense?
Isn't it easier to raise the bonds now? Without, I mean, without, that's a lot easier than changing the whole ordinance.
Yeah.
You could just say the bond is down.
Yeah, what does it take to raise a bond now?
That would be a process, do you know, Tim, here, is that a process you're always checking? For the bond street, is it currently five hundred dollars?
I've heard from A G members for that.
Okay, so what is the process for us to raise the bond?
I, we, we did it in ordinance, we're, I like Kelly said earlier, I don't think we're sure where those amounts came from, five hundred, three hundred, probably.
I have no idea, it's like, just to grab them out there, and maybe five hundred dollars is worth it.
So, can we set up our resolution, since other fees?
Other fees are set by our resolution.
So, can we go ahead?
I would suggest you give us time, a little more time to look at our ordinances, make sure we didn't miss anything.
Okay.
And that we don't need to change our ordinance in some manner to facilitate doing this permit by resolution and getting the house.
Would it be possible that that would be ready for our office meeting?
That information?
Yeah.
Oh, I think so.
Okay, maybe, yeah. So, I think for, for our office meeting, whether we have a, so I guess if we, one wanted to, would either be a resolution or an ordinance update, right? So, could we either have a resolution prepared, or if it is an ordinance that we have, our probably would be needing for that?
I really think it can be done by resolution.
I'm thinking so too, but let us, let us, maybe in that, and just make sure that we're not missing something. And then we'll give a quick call and find out, make sure, I tend to agree with Kelly, I think it can be done by resolution.
Okay, okay.
And just while we've got everyone here, what is, is the amount that we're thinking of, just in case we have resolutions, which is not having a call that will back down here.
Well, what is it, a different cost to fix a case?
Well, if you, just looking at Bozeman's, there is just a five thousand dollar bond, then it's like two hundred and seventy dollars per square foot, and then they have a couple of other fees thrown in there. So, maybe, to make the town, somebody's gonna have to throw out over six, maybe close to six thousand dollars, they're gonna fix the road and get their six thousand dollars back.
Sure, I guess my question is, if maybe someone in the construction business knows, what is, what would be the current cost to repair the patch of our road?
I think it depends, if the curb has got, I just asked, I mean, sometimes there's some street you just ask for. Down town, you prepare their curb, so it's, it is.
It's more complicated.
It is a little more complicated.
I think we need to make this number really substantial, in my opinion, really substantial. It might not be a matter of taking a check, but you put a ten grand on there, just for instance. Hang on a second, listen to what I'm saying here. I know they're gonna make sure that this is fixed, no matter, they're gonna get their money back. And it's not even a matter of if they, we don't necessarily take a ten thousand dollar check, not necessarily, but if they don't do it, you put a lien on the property, make sure.
Well, that's a part of it, yeah.
Yeah, so, we need to make this substantial so it gets fixed, and then not.
Well, yeah, and the fix is not properly, because I think there were ones that ever re-paged, but they didn't last, you know, what, three months, and then Kelly's crew is out there trying.
Plus the curb, which I never thought until Kelly was mentioned, and the curbing was a big deal there as well.
It's not just the road, I mean, why can't we just put in there that your water won't be turned on until it's fixed properly?
Yeah, you sort of, yeah.
Which is, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
That's kind of tough, sometimes we, if you, like, Kelly, for how long would you, you put it in in fall? Sometimes they don't like to, you don't like to fix it, so it's spring, if you get some water on it. I mean, there was a time where we let it go for a while.
I look for natural compaction, but the problem we're having now, and people not really wanting to do it right, is no, you could actually have them make sure it's compacted, right? Instead of having, some of my current contractors just come in and dump and let it, uh, you know, you could also go with the non-shrink, which is a real leak concrete that can be dug up at a later date, then you know it's compacted. So, there's way to make sure it's compacted, right, and not to let it go six months to be fixed.
This goes back to like the completion of building thing that we talked about at one point, that we don't really have a completion of building form, so that it's completed to the fullest.
I agree, yeah, because now all those things that are completed.
John?
Well, I think that would exist, on top of this, we're getting Kelly, any of the building permits that you, our issue, you know, there is a final inspection and laws, not laws, but limited occupancy. And final inspection, if a tree's docked, you don't, you don't grant occupancy of a tree that's already in your documents under the building.
That's a tough one, John, because, you know, we only have, you know, we only have four, a little bit of plumbing inspectionist, the town now has this liability that says you can go live in that, it's a tough one, right?
The word is just there, and then the other one too, is I've watched different contractors, some come in on the back hall and open up a ten-foot trench to make that connection. Others come in and they cut the pavement carefully and they dig it out, and it's just, you know, construction technique. But the contractors, the big, big trench, probably aren't intending to fill it that deep. It's more, they're not supposed to do something by the fact they have, they have a curb, they just have to come in and.
Which is why we're not.
Okay, so by office meeting, we will, so we'll be on the office agenda and provide information for.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, a quick go over, just hold it on and just pick up on different things.
Again, we never discussed that in our region.
Because initially, they have a permit fee calculation, you know, to figure out, and then, to, if we're holding on, do you want, do you want both of those in there? An initial permit fee, or do you wanna go with just language that this is gonna be a bond? And if it, this lines out, you know.
So, they charged them down, or maybe they charged them a fee for it, and they have to fix it, is that correct?
A fee for the application, yeah.
Yes.
And that's maybe on, it looks like total, total hundred forty-five minutes.
Yeah, um, yeah, on the deprivation fee. Cut-off fee is a little bit different. But you need to figure that the man hours that we're gonna put in between Kelly and the office, et cetera, you know, handling these permits and making sure that they are correct. And so, a permit fee, in my mind, is not out of line to include.
Well, why don't we, I don't know my knowledge, but I think a five thousand dollar, I don't know, what do you think? I'm having the construction industry, so I don't know how much.
I think that's about half the million, should be, I would think a ten thousand, too.
I think a ten thousand, that's.
I know, that's what I, that's what I have.
But you just fix it.
Yeah, but I don't want that to hold up of them, if that, I don't know.
So, wait, is this for hookup, or, because sometimes I, when I do a hookup, I'm hooking up two houses.
So, it's just one cut?
Right, so, I'm saying two ten thousands, and then the same thing is actually happening, and I'm joining you twice, that doesn't seem to be fair.
No, no, it's just for one, for one, for one cut.
Not for hookup, because you understand, like, I just put up four, and one.
So, that was just a one cut?
That was forty thousand dollars.
They're not writing on ten thousand on the check, they're just putting up a bond. If they don't perform, we can then put a lien on their property. Correct, for the ten thousand dollars, or are they actually putting up a bond?
I think they're actually putting up a bond.
But they're not, they're not actually writing a check for ten.
Insurance company is writing a bond. Yeah, sure.
They're not gonna give you ten thousand dollars as a deposit.
Yeah, that's not a bond, that's a deposit.
That's a bond, so, yeah, so it's not a bond.
Why don't buy a bond, they can buy a ten thousand dollar bond for that one cut.
But then, that bond would completely use his.
Well, then, you're part of that bond.
So, if the bond would get paid under nonperformance, so they, so they can put a thousand dollars or a ten thousand dollar bond, it's not a hard, a hard.
Sure, okay.
A year later, if it's not fixed, then, I mean, you have that warranty in there, you get the bond.
Okay.
But I also agree with the wording, because in the one that Denver has, where it talks about how many square feet you take out, and if you take out a curb, or if you're just taking out asphalt, I mean, it goes a little detail, which makes sense.
Yeah, it would be easier this way.
That, that.
But you're gonna collect your money before the hole, maybe, and you collect it before, first work the hole, and then they got to work the hole.
So, given this, on number eight, the three opening bonds, each three cut permanent, three opening bonds, and a total bond, one maybe just a fee, shall be provided in the amount of five thousand dollars, or one hundred percent of the cost of the work, which are free later. So, technically, depending on the size of the cut, it could be more than five thousand, and how I would, you know, there's an amount of fee, so I don't know if they, if they have a focal point, or like.
Yeah, I think your real point is, would they apply for square feet, and then they end up doing a mayor.
You're out of control, and then that's administration.
And then you have a stock, they can't complete it until, and they come in and correct it. And it is, that's my initial.
Does the town have an insurance company they can consult with, and say, well, we sell a bond for this, and what's the way that you could?
And MIA.
That way, you're not leaving it up to the property owner, or the commitment authority.
Yeah, that's something to look at, yeah.
Okay, and just by my, really, this one, he said he'd sent me one over, something over, and help you with this one a little bit. Does it impact these, Bozeman right now, charters, impact these?
I just, I thought that, I thought it was very, it wasn't anything that I wanted to implement, it was just very, I would.
But it's something that we probably should look at, and we're in discussion. If I'm not mistaken, with my square feet, and I mean, it could go from a thousand dollars for a house up to, I thought I saw fifteen thousand for a major retail establishment. It impacts these, that affect the town, and it's something I think with our current growth, we really need to look at. It might not be something that is what we need to do now, but I think it's something we definitely need to look at, because. but I think it's something we definitely need to look at, because you see the impact as it's coming. People, things are getting built, and more is coming, and more is coming. And if, uh, they need to help pay, offset what's coming to curb the town, for lack of a better word, or put the impact obviously on there by streets, by, uh, utilities, and all the other things that go with this, so, yes. I mean, this is something that we very potentially need to look at. Again, it might not be, like, this is financial time, but it needs to be...
Give me a legislature...
I, that's what I'm thinking, that they, that they can't do that, you can't do that, so...
Um, I would say, we looked at impact fees years ago, like, in bars, sewer.
Uh-huh.
Um, and then what was required to establish impact fees was so intense, um, the process, et cetera. That the town turned, they did a different direction now, was like with water and sewer, of us. That's where we put on, in the amounts to increase every year for 10 years, and then stop. We looked at impact fees for that. And it was more than what the town could handle at that time to get those established.
Yeah, no, I guess it wasn't anything... But the town was just... I was around looking at different things.
But the town wasn't growing like it is now, when we guys were looking at that. 10 years ago, the town was a completely different animal than what it is now.
And it'd be something that we could ask, um, if we had a completion drill on, on board.
I think Maria's right, I think they were stuck up the month, you know?
Let's just make sure of that, yeah.
That's number one.
Yeah, so it would, yeah, but, yeah.
But I still think it's something we should do more of it, yeah. Something we need to, yeah. Goes along the line with the, just with the growth in general. Um, people that have been here shouldn't have to be paying for people coming in necessarily. They should be helping as they're coming in, to help the cost of what's coming in this town. It should not be left on people that have been here all this time. That's something we hear about all the time. I'm sure all of you have heard this at this point in time. And that's why I wanted to bring that up, is that we need to do that way. But again, it's not, it's something we can look at. Okay.
A lot of... I'm gonna...
Yeah, just, just a food thought.
I just look at what Kelly's calling for.
Okay, we've got two text amendments here. Uh... Just a second, we'll look here, I'm not reading all these. There's 20 pages here. Um, is there one, one thing that you guys wanna tap over the other?
Well, I think we have a conditional use permit. One is, was that permitted? I think, um, what would be, uh, and this is what the Alex developed, and also what was recommended by the planning board at their meeting. Um, I think it would also be helpful to, um, have, um, the on-call planners take a look at it too.
Okay, so it should be tabled, is that what, what with this, or...
Um, well, for the kitchen, I don't think it needs to be tabled, but I think for the conditionally permit, that one, there would be kinda um, set that to Alex, um, as that part of it. And I think really what...
You need to do the table, right?
Yeah, I think where our biggest concentration is, is in the table, which was on page seven of the text amendments.
You basically need to fill in the blanks.
Yeah, on, on recommendation. Uh, and if, and if you wanna pull it up, yeah, yeah, let's look on that. Does John have it? John, do you have it?
Let me see, so how is this, isn't it...
Maybe if you can, and expand it, because it's kind of small to read.
Okay, then the one thing with this is, we gotta keep in mind, when Alex, I was seeing him in the office with him, um, some of these lower ones, he was just throwing numbers in there. So that's where we really need to look at, aside from what he's saying, how do you need to work with it?
Well, and then I think this is, you know, the work session is necessary. And then I think, and I think that we come up with, also needs to be reviewed as well. Did you, were you able to locate that zoning map?
I don't know, yeah. I have it come up with it.
Is there a way for you to pull this zoning map from the...
Uh, whoopsie.
From the town site, I feel like, up here?
I, no, you don't have to...
Yeah, I'm talking about that.
I think you...
But he says...
Spritway gave you a shot, I think Spritway. Because it's always helpful that it's, uh, so to all.
I'm sorry, I'm talking, I also look at my computer, I have something in my system right on. Before you get into the table, in the text amendment, there is no time guidelines, so time coming to you.
Okay.
And I think that would be helpful before, uh, and just to know when they can expect a response.
Okay.
I think it's a pretty standard.
Okay. Maybe that's what we can add, um...
I don't see, this is, this is a...
We can ask on-call planners to integrate that into their, and seeing that they're, they'll be a part of reviewing these, they can have a good sense of what the timeline could be. What, what do you think for that?
I think it would help, that's just what we're talking about.
Yeah, when you submit an application, you know, you're getting your response.
I mean, right around the turn, it's...
Days or whatever, yeah. Just something that went to infinity, it's not good for anybody.
No.
Okay, um, ladies, we'll get back. So on the conditional use permit, um, Josh has asked that we also integrate a timeline, um, for review of those applications. So, so when someone submits a conditional use permit, they will know, they will have an answer within a certain amount of time.
Right around the, it's 30 working days.
Yeah, so I think he should ask that we, uh, make sure that that is outlined in his amendments.
Okay.
So, and maybe...
And then for, you know, I said some questions, but...
Okay.
Time for response.
Sure, why not? It's a work session.
So if you submit a 30-day, they get something back that says, do you need one more? Do you have a next? And then you get a response, what's your timeline to respond on that?
Okay.
So it's, just helps everybody know when stuff does do, and when you can expect an answer.
No, that's a good idea. We need to all include what you guys included, because like I said, we're kind of gonna build this as a grow-up.
And I think that's more than fair, because he gets more random error, and still was it about coming?
But he's talking, it's been long as well. So we've heard about that.
Okay, Lisa, what are some of the issues you're having with the table?
Well, I can push your hand.
I just, just to like, like, read this, or whatever, I mean?
Yeah.
It, it, when you get down to the smaller lots, where it says, you know, like, from zero up to an acre, it's 50 feet, um, and the side yard would be 25 feet, and down below it's NA, NA, NA. Is that under an acre that we're talking about on those lines?
Um, so...
Confusion, so if you go to C1, it's NA up to an acre, it's 50 feet. And then down low, P1 is zilp, it's all straight across. So I'm trying to figure out, on some of these small town blocks that are under acre, I mean, am I reading this correctly, or am I way off base?
Okay, so, okay, so if we go to our current, are you reading on the current or proposed?
Proposed.
Proposed. So I think he put NA in in those because, um, for P1, it's, it's, because we actually don't have any plant industrial in town.
Yeah, we're actually looking at getting rid of that line.
Yeah.
Okay, so that line shouldn't go away.
Okay, so in C1, would, would just be commercial.
Right.
Uh, industrial area. So area slash DU is area per dwelling unit. That's what the DU stands for.
Okay.
Um, and I guess, yeah, we'll have to figure this out, because I think dwelling units is there, um, are not permitted in conver, in that commercial industrial. And so that's why it's an NA, is because residences are not permitted.
In commercial?
In, well, in that commercial industrial. So there's residential. So we start from the, start from the top. There are ag.
Right.
Then there are residential. And then the ones with the CR, those are commercial residential.
Okay.
So those are niche duties, and then there is straight up commercial uses, if that makes sense.
H, H, highway commercial.
An H, D, a highway commercial. They do use a lot of acronyms when putting this table together. And this table is, it's what's interesting, and this table is really what, like, they make a lot of stuff, and it's, um... It's all kind of compacted when it means to be maybe more literally outlined, because if you skip over this table, it could be, um, tricky. So, um, I guess, uh, moving, go ahead, Lisa.
Let's just say, looking at area and lot, area per dwelling unit and lot area, if you look at, um, residential low density, you have to have a half acre, that's your entire, that's the minimum size you can have residential low density. But if you have an additional dwelling unit on your half acre, then each dwelling unit, like the houses and the additional building unit, I think the minimum lot size for that is 7,500.
So, no, I think that's where, just to have the lot area is, um, 75. And this is where I like to get the lot area.
Because it should, this is basically the, I have a question, but like, you have a half acre, and you wanna put another dwelling unit, and it's allowed to have an additional dwelling unit. Then you, it should just be half, uh, to be, right?
Well, I think that's what it, well, what it's saying is, in residential low density, you need to have at least a half an acre for one dwelling unit. If you wanna put in a second dwelling unit, you need...
An additional 750 square feet.
You need an additional, you need a full acre. If you want two dwelling units on there, that's where, and this is where it gets into...
So the half acres, 21, 100, 21, 100?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if I, I can give you a little light on that, like that. So if you've got a one-acre lot, and then say you have four, break it into four small lots, you've gotta have rows, parks, uh, that's your big area users, but, so... You know, of course, in your example, our LD, you could have two there, or two units on that.
Right.
And then your row would take up some space, and your park would take up some space. But then your minimum lot size has to be 7,500 square feet.
Thank you.
That's a, yeah. I've been through this about eight times.
So now that we've got, got it figured out, we need to fill in the blanks on L-CR, area DU and Y.
Well, I think, yeah, those were all the areas that you could put in with a relief, which is traditional neighborhood development.
Right, and we're getting rid of that.
So we're getting rid of that, yeah.
So do we want it to be actually less, which Alex put in a third of an acre? So that would be our smallest lot size in, in the house?
No, it would be eight of an acre would be our smallest lot size. And that's where in the LCR...
That's already there.
Yeah, so in LCR, which is the local commercial residential, um, that's where some, his recommendations have a few discrepancies to me. So the, and the local CR is those streets off of them, these streets. Um, so to give you a visual, it is Stephens Street and William Street.
And then there's spot down here, which we're gonna get rid of? Or no, that's...
Yeah. Yeah, so, okay, so, local, yeah, so local commercial is, yeah, Stephens Street, well, it's half of Stephens Street, William Street, and then, um, over here on, on Bow River Lane. So that have the area that we're talking about now. Um, so, and then, to be honest, most of those are already developed. Um, so I think having it, um, instead of a full third of an acre, um, and he requiring more than RTB, those lot sizes, you know, we're able to put it down there. So those lot sizes are already 7,500 square feet, plus or minus, right?
Uh, no, 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 so it's a 5,000.
Okay. So to have them at 7,000 square feet, to go up to be a third of an acre, would be...
Let's hear, on Stephens, this... Keeping on, uh, LCR and CCR, Alex is just throwing numbers, and so if there's something that you wanna change, that's where we need to look at.
Yeah, and that's where I think it should be smaller, because those areas are closer to downtown.
One of Larry's lots on Stephens is 0.164 acres. Okay. So that's, like, five thousand, something to consider, like...
Yeah. Yeah, so in that, so I don't wanna make it difficult for people that already have lots there. I don't mind, because, because it's, you know, and then when you look at street coverage, if we're looking at LCR, he has a street range of 70 feet. None of those lots are 70 feet wide, so... And so I think we just go with 50 there.
50 with street range there?
Yeah. Just to make it congruent with what is already on the property, so, um... So for LCR, I think it should, um, maybe it should mash up with, um, the CCR and have it one one per area in DU, would we, one one per quarter acre in lot area of, um...
An eight acre?
Um... Oh, yeah, I think it should be an eight, yeah, it should be...
Like, almost every single one of those lots on that street is already...
An eighth of an acre, okay.
Just slightly over eighty.
Okay, so if...
Is that what LCR number looking at?
Yes, so on LCR, area should be one eighth of an acre. And then lot area would be 4,000 square feet.
50 foot street coverage, correct?
Um, yeah, and then this is where I think, um, okay, yeah, we'll get you, we'll get you. And then for the front yard, um, I think 15 feet is appropriate for that. What's that?
I can't throw that, it's, it's, no, it's 25, it's 25.
Yeah, so 15 feet. Actually, in the LCR, it says traditional neighborhood development, so no...
I had it in special format, just to know.
The conditional use permit, yeah, I'm good, yeah.
Would change that, maybe?
One set at a time, I reckon.
All right, so...
Okay, so LCR, so would be area is one eighth, lot area 4,000, front yard 15. Um, side yard, um, I would like to keep five feet.
17?
Instead of 10, because it's only 50 feet wide.
Okay.
Um, rear yard, I think should be, um...
I think 10 is good for rear yard, because there's an alley.
Well, I think, I think five, I'd be sufficient, because there's an alley.
Well, what's in the town, there's no, lot of those houses are right on, aren't there? Like, I mean, like, where you are, is it right on?
Some, some of the older ones are, the newer ones are. That's why I think five feet is, is, because you have 12 feet for the alley, right?
Right.
And then you each have five, that should be sufficient.
Yeah, that should be fine.
That should be sufficient. Um, for LCR, street front end should be 50. And then here, um, so this is, the height is 35 here, or that's, it was 40.
And that's, yeah, and we're bumping it down to five, mainly.
I know what the thoughts are. I mean, so the thought behind the LCR, as far as I understand it, is that it then is not, it's a commercial corridor of what it's supposed to be mixed use, still, so... And I know no one likes those, but I'm gonna use that one, because it's one of the ones we're all most familiar with, okay? Main Street is all your big buildings. Just off of Main Street on Badcock and Menon Hall, it's all your, where the lawyers and the accountant's office and the dentists are, you know, so those older homes that they've converted over to commercial space. And it's supposed to be that border between residential getting into a commercial corridor, so, um... So you keep 35 feet?
I like the 35, because if it's gonna be something taller, they have to come and see us. And we haven't made a decision at that point, time to make.
Well, they, they, they go to the zoning board and adjust it, and ask for a variance.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, I, I feel 35 feet, so that we still, um, are really...
But is 35 feet, okay, so is thinking that now is 35, 40 or 35 feet appropriate there?
It, it, is, well, let me ask you, this is, can you go to a three-story building and 35 feet? Contrary, yes. Then I say go, then I say keep it at 35. We, we already saw there for 40. 35 would, and then, and then if it's gonna go higher, then it goes to the board of adjustments.
Well, they would have to, they would have to, they would have to, which is really hard to...
Right, but what, what I'm saying is that dropping it by 5 feet, that still allows the building... Right, but what, what I'm saying is that dropping it by the feet, that still allows the building to build a three story real lately, and it lowers the, the city, like, I, I think that's sufficient. John?
Um. It's whatever the government's body wants to do in your intent for the development of the community, and if these areas are buffer zones between commercial and residential, then I think historically, those buffer zones lean to be more residential than commercial, so adjacent commercial, adjacent residential, that's a thirty-five foot limit, probably the buffer zones, because they are buffers, and that's the intent, to be a buffer, the height should be thirty-five, rather than four, you're, you're purring to what your intent is as a government body.
All right, so we.
So for thirty-five, you're.
So we're okay with thirty-five there, okay. Uh, I, if we can, um, just go back up, just to our LD, and just, um, look at the front yard setback, I think that, um, it was recommended that that be dropped down to twenty feet, and I would agree with that recommendation. That was the only recommendation on that one. And the same for rural, um, for our LD and our MD, um, is to bring those down to twenty feet, which would then lower the burden on, um, people to utilize their lots. And I think historically, that's what it was previously, and in town, you can see, uh, what's on our twenty feet in Hills District, which is, um, to give you a visual, that's like, like, South Stephens Street.
So, can you, that's like green, but green is low density or medium density?
Uh.
Low density.
Low density.
And yellow.
And then medium density, town density.
It's, the light yellow is the medium.
Medium density. So low density, you see yourself, Stephens Street, S R. So that gives you something to visualize, so, so I think, so I would like to keep Alex's recommendation, I just want to make sure that we keep an Alex's recommendation, that that, we reduce, the part of our, reduce in those areas to twenty-one.
Well, and then also the two, um, town lots, maybe.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back, and then the rest of them, we can hit line by line. I think those were the only other recommendations, um, if that makes sense. And then I can, now we can go and start with RTD, area per dwelling unit, eighth of an acre, lot area four thousand square feet, front yard fifteen.
Which you changed.
Okay, and then, you changed, um.
And the side yard changed.
Yeah, and I would like to see the side yard at IP instead of his recommended ten feet, and that is due to those small, I mean, those are the most, that, a lot of that is already developed, to put the five feet, you only have, most of those lots are fifty even with, and having a ten feet on each side really reduces the, the whole area.
Isn't that changing anything on the left?
Yeah, so RTD side yard by these, um, rear yard by these, I think that's all the same.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the LCR?
We need that one, the CCR.
The CCR, um, I think, what's that, uh, fifteen?
Fifteen, thank you.
Um, the CCR requires, I think this is where also it would need an eighth of an acre, not a whole quarter acre, because there are certain areas in town, that are, they're, I don't even know, they're, eight of an acre downtown. Some of those lots are really small.
Let's see.
I mean, because they shaved off a bunch when they put the highway in.
So downtown, all of those tickets.
Take, take the pharmacy lot for.
The pharmacy, uh, we will make a lot. Are we doing CCR?
Yeah.
Pharmacy CCR is point one four acres, but the smallest one is RE/MAX, one thirty eighty man, it's point one zero three seven acres.
Yeah, and there's probably, what is that, where the town, the Chamber of Commerce is?
Oh, yeah, that, that one's.
Present.
Point one zero six seven. No, the, the, the RE/MAX is right next to the pharmacy, right?
Yeah.
Not on the corner?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the smallest one, point one zero three seven. Okay, I want to make it that small, I want to just keep that, but.
Yeah, so I would say that we, one eighth of an acre, or one twelve of an acre, was one twelve point oh feet. And I wish we would actually use, um, square feet instead of, I'm going to use it.
What do you want, what do you think that should be for acre?
Um, or we can just use square footage, and why couldn't we use, you know, the four thousand square feet?
Okay, so the four thousand square feet is point zero nine, so basically point one one acres?
Or.
Four thousand square feet.
Yeah, and that adds a little bit more than one twelve of an acre, one twelve is thirty-six thirty.
So seven, the quarter acre, we're going to do four thousand square feet.
Four thousand square feet, and then we'll have to adjust lot area of four thousand square feet. And then, um, and then these are the values that I'd like to maybe get some reference. I know a three or a house is ten feet front yard.
For work, for work.
So this is, um, core commercial residential.
So wait, so you got the four thousand square feet instead of a quarter acre?
Yes.
And then what about lot area?
Lot area of four thousand square feet, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so ten feet front yard, they don't have a front yard.
Well, they do, well, those one, going forward, the ones in the Josh's in the North Forty, or say, say one from once, it's not just undeveloped, it's redeveloped. So let's all take our favorite building, develop it, take an idea, you know, if they want to redevelop, are we going to, are we going to require that they move at ten feet back?
Gotcha.
And we're required to then have a ten foot side back on either, setback from either side, because then you're going to build a, that's probably like fifteen feet wide, so, um.
Seasoned, there's zero.
Well, let's take another favorite building, that is, thirty-five feet wide, it's on a thirty-five foot lot.
Exactly.
And, you know, if you say somebody wants to be developed, you can put a fence line down the middle, or redevelop it, which is, so that access comes in, you can, in.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, so that's where I think that we can, um, and maybe this is where we can get some help from our, how our planners, is talk about where zero lot lines would be, um, available, you know, because it depends on, I know, like, you know, downtown, it's fairly obvious, you know, zero lot lines are going to be built to each other, um, for retail spaces, whatever, but then when it comes to the North Forty, it's going to be interesting to see, um, how bad is the lot else there, and the use is there? You know, are you going to want a zero lot line there for those, these use?
It should be zero, where it's already zero, you know, because, I mean, all downtowns, and not all downtowns, most downtowns just have a building right next to each other. But what we want to deal with is the front, so we can, from the back, if we don't have enough room anyway.
Yeah.
And then on the corner front, like, do the lot, the bucket, anywhere with a street frontage, it should be that ten feet. John?
You have to follow this, um, zero lot lines, existing downtown Main Street, zero lot lines, it really affects fire ratings, and then that affects your water utility requirements for fighting fires, you know, can you fight a fire with two thousand GPM for two hours, because you've got a bunch of zero lot lines? I drive it down, but that's, the fire ratings, so, where you have zero lot lines, obviously there's a grandfather clause, but, you know, again, it's the government's intent of what you want. If you continue zero lot lines, you're affecting your water utility, and how much water you have down in the running of wars, the back day, heat down, or fire ban, so, if it flows, by the way, if those kind of decisions on tightness of structure flows right into your fire ban and water utility decide, so.
Yeah, I guess I was going to focus you on downtown, but we do have other section that's probably.
And so maybe, yeah, so and then that's where I think we need to, uh, maybe ask for recommendations from, um, Kushy Charol, knowing, you know, trying to, what's the best way to go about this with our capacity for water, fire rates? I, I think that, the way that I understand it, we can't re-require a fire, you know, say, oh, you want zero lot line, or these are the fire requirements that you need to.
Well, then the dog has, um, said that when you do the zero lot line, town has a certain issue with fire bans, fight those kind of fires, not, not one with.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, I mean, if, if, in this, while we're chatting all of these different things out, as far as like, well, we've got Main Street existing.
Yeah.
Um, perhaps asking, or is there another commercial zone that we could put in for the newer stuff, like the North Forty? Looking in, here, and take a main street, kind of, i- its own, just the main street zoning?
And I think that, um, I think the goal now is to do the tech amendment, because we're taking out the T and D, so we have to, so we want to do that, not that, I think that's a greater suggestion, and then I think that moving forward with the zoning updates, um, whether it be any other tech amendment in the future, add something in, um, but I think we're going to take out the T and D, we have to, the amendment, it is, and that would be a map, that would be a map amendment as well, right? And then there, and there would be a zoning change, which is another process as well.
Thank you, just to add color. I like, actually, my own lot, the CCR now.
Yeah.
So like next group for all the other lot owners, but there is, you know, they're all done a little bit differently, but, um, you know, you've got a sixty foot wide road easily on both of those, some of them have, um, common open space, it's owned by the, uh, owner association, so even if those smaller lots in the North Forty, they built all the way to the lot line, you're still going to have some space between them, you're really going to have a common line on one wall, if that makes sense. Because you've got a row and common area on either side of them, so your, your zero lot line is going to be completed.
Could there be something to the effect of, the zero lot line is eligible if it gets conditionally reserved? So then that way it's getting some kind of review.
It would have to already exist in our zoning to be able to.
I think we can go to footnote in, since we're taking a footnote out, we can put a footnote in that, I don't know, so.
And quite quickly, I think the likelihood of people wanting to do those zero lot line limits, probably not real high, just because of the added cost to the fire suppression you have to put in to have that common wall, so. And not say anyone who does.
There's ways, um, that even if you have a fire rating on the wall, fire insurance people accept that, and also give a common wall construction for residential, you have to have a certain amount of fire rating, probably a two, three hour, I don't know, against a level, or something like that.
Two one hours.
And two hours, but two hours, so, there's, we are not here for the people, based on this, this is.
Sure.
Pretty well, well, credit.
And so, keep in mind, those all get defeated by the state as well, unless commercial buildings, we review by state, by state.
Okay, but what is there looking to fill the residential in, CCR? And will the global conditional use permit?
Yeah, and then anything over forty, that's, we're doing, well, certainly it has.
So, like, so I guess side yard, uh, okay, CCR, side yard is zero.
No.
That's what we're talking about, zero, zero lot line.
Well, it would be grandfathered in for downtown, but we don't want zero lot lines from now on.
And it'll pay for instance, that something downtown gets knocked down, they're going to raise the building, so. The IG, yeah, so the IG, so now they're going to be required to, you know.
But they would be grandfathered in, right?
No.
But they're going to be, well, not the buildings.
So, so, so they, they would be holding them, so they wouldn't be grandfathered in, so.
So that's a good example of, what do you want to do going forward? Do you want to continue with, when they do rebuild that as zero, or do you want to put one in? I mean, it's a perfect example of what we're looking.
And I think that's probably just as why as the theater probably thirty-five feet.
Didn't, didn't, Bertray just, I mean, when they build and they do a remodel, argueably with their new structure? Well, Bertray really.
I mean, California, all you end up doing, saving a door frame, a door, and then, soon as remodeled, and that's what you're generally giving the development pressure here, when somebody wants to do something on Main Street, I'll keep the front window, it's a store, and all the rest of it is remodeled, comes as a van by, they're not dumb.
So, yeah, and so I think.
I just think if we do it for that reason, just as one or two buildings downtown, then we're going to.
I think, well, I think, I.
We're going to get a bunch of buildings in the North Forty that are disconnected all the way down.
Well, I think that as the North Forty's intent has to be another downtown.
Yeah, the, most you'll ever have connected would be three, and those are bigger lots, dude, those are important, they're bigger lots. So you might have two businesses in that with each other, you know, for, for restaurant right next to each other, they might share a lot. But, well, like, bank term for sure, unless Naples expands into the drive thru, they're not going to have a connected structure, that's all.
Yeah, of course, you go around, you're going to see each other, so.
Okay, with the zero lot line, um, then, you know, even in the North Forty, it may be that, that may, whether it's tightly compacted, so that you can walk, which is different, I think, there, there are, I think it's appropriate, it's obviously appropriate downtown. I don't want to burden anyone that may want to put in a new business down there, and to give beneficial regulations to, um, to over that, the previous building that we have, you know, so.
I was just saying, zero, yeah.
Yeah, zero, and I think, um, on that one, a five, a five per rear yard is appropriate too.
So, do I call it?
We're doing zero, we have a.
Ten on the front.
But then, ten on the front. Oh, no, no, on the front, I think that should be five, because then, then it could be with redevelopment, then immediately get. So.
And then the side yard?
Um, side yard, zero, rear yard, five, street frontage, are we going to need fifty, or are some of those, like John was saying, thirty-five?
Yeah.
So we mark that as thirty-five?
Two more of them, that's thirty-five.
Something, you can just count five, Ben, too, are like, where there's little shops all over, and, you know, and there's some of, some of them are thirty-five already.
I don't know.
No, 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 we're talking about with the street frontage.
Yeah.
So they're not, or maybe they could, they could stay it, but I would think thirty-five goes from.
Going forward.
Going forward.
There's no way the law doesn't really expand it.
They can't really expand it a lot, I think we would, that's where our hardship and our variance.
Would work.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we're going to thirty-five on street front?
Yes, and then thirty-five in hindsight? How do we all feel about that?
Thirty-five.
It was forty.
It was the trees are. They tell them that anyway.
Yeah, so it was, so this is Alex's recommendation, it was forty, I believe the new building downtown is thirty feet. The bank is probably thirty, or probably forty.
But they have to come see us on each one of those projects, I like the thirty-five, because then they have to come see our entity, our group of people.
But then they have to go a lot higher than that, but then they have to have, even if they liked it. So say if the zone in the quarter administration wants, talked about variances, because they have to do a project, and I think you have to remember, so they could all love the project, and they're like, yeah, we want that, I'd like to be able to go forty-five feet tall, unless they can show a hardship?
Does it also have?
It doesn't, it doesn't have to do that.
Under conditional use, if they come under that.
Not a decent size of thirty-five.
No, you set it behind, because you have, you only get, so.
So what would be the, what would be the point in, in construction terms of that extra five I D? I'm just asking, since we can build three stories at thirty-five, what would the extra five I D do, I mean, is it aesthetic?
It's mostly aesthetic, and some of this, you know, cost of construction, um, those taller buildings don't have base units, for example, on the roof, so, um, you know, that counts against you, so if you have a fence or a shielded A C, and whether, and when you up there.
You know, if you wanna get duckwork in your floors, and most floors in houses are one foot tall, if you wanna make a commercial duckwork, you gotta have an expanded floor, so that more.
Of course, it's a built-in story.
Another, another question, just to bring up, John just brought us up, is does it mean Main Street downtown has store or business?
Yeah.
To keep, to keep the look of the old west, downtown, um, and just throw this out there, maybe this is just off the wall, but that in the eighteen hundreds, it's a false store door and sign. So can you imagine, it's a false store door, the building is thirty-five feet, but then the store door, I'm gonna go five, I know it's a six feet.
And that would have to be that, and I, and I think that traditional neighborhood development, I think that was like, there are tenants at our store district, in our code, it just never really got, it never had the parameters to get that, so I think there is something to be said for that, and then going forward in a new proposed district, isn't that saying this is, this is true of the district resource guidelines, so that would fall upon our, but that also counts as that.
It does that, okay.
Yeah, and so, that's where we have to come together as a community and say, we, we want, they, you know, the new building downtown being thirty-eight feet tall, are we comfortable with that?
It's a little tall.
It's a little tall, yeah.
Seventy-some people.
Yeah.
But, I, I believe, you know, communities like those part of developers have declared, it's easy to divide the limits of a historical district, and once you do that, and you're, you haven't heard about free running, do what you put in a historical district, including incentivizing keeping it in a historical look.
Sure.
And, but, it's, you know, from, I'm just starting, so the first, the third, you know.
Yeah, well, and what's interesting is, like, communities like Red Lodge, it's actually more difficult to build in their, like, all of their highway entrance area, than it is to build downtown, get scrutinized more, and like, I think their town hall had to come back to the city of Red Lodge, like, four or five times to finally get it, because that has a greater impact, I mean, in Red Lodge, their buildings are all the other, you know, so not much is gonna change too much there. So they can define in, in a code update, those areas, and make it more historical or whatever. So I guess, I'm just looking at thirty-five feet, if we wanted, you know, lodging, you know, a hotel, boutique hotel, is that something that we want, would they wanna go for forty-five, forty feet, not forty-five, forty feet? Is that taking something away from, you know?
But if you put it at forty, they're gonna ask for forty-five, they're gonna ask for variances.
But they wouldn't get it, what's that?
I didn't say that, I mean, you never know, I mean, you know.
So then for a height to get a better height on variance, or variance on height, is just the issue.
Can you, can you give me, just, for, for Layla Sturte, just, just give me an example of a hardship or height, I'm just.
I can't even think of one.
I'm thinking of trying to.
And that's, that's why I'm saying, like, when they come in for a hardship, uh, you know, for a variance on height.
Really, would it, would it be an elevator for like, handing down, I'm asking, do you, do you, do you mind, right?
I would say, say you're building on a slope, and you have like a daylight placement of your normal access is on the top.
Yeah.
Well, you can only go thirty-five feet from your lowest grade, right, so then you can only get like fifteen feet from the access.
So, so, so the thirty-five feet is from the grade, so, and Layla's turned street well up, thirty-five feet up, correct? So are they not allowed to go down?
No.
Well, in the current code, it's from the lowest.
Right, they could park it below that.
That's what I'm asking, yes. So in other words, they could, so thirty-five feet would be sufficient if they could go underground, I'm talking boutique hotel or whatever, coming up by that, they could just go seven, under the ground.
Yeah.
But it seems like, I mean, to me, I wouldn't wanna have something, I, I mean, because I wouldn't want it more than forty feet, because I just feel like, you know, some of these buildings are gonna come down at some point, and they'll have all forty-foot buildings, you'll be driving down Main Street.
That's.
And you always see trees in the mountain, it's gonna be, I don't know, it's a small zone on our downtown, so, I.
You like it, I think.
I think, I like, I don't like big, tall buildings, but, you know, I don't know if you can prevent people, all these things from happening, coming in at some point, but.
I'm just, I'm just.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, that I'm saying, somebody's gonna wanna do that at some point.
Yeah, that's a good thing, just, it's a rather, but, I, I have just agreed that I would like to see, I think, seventy people that were here, or the outdoor, thirty-five I D, I think would, would be a nice compromise in, in the height.
Just remember, New York City had a lighting restriction of thirty-five feet a long time.
Yeah, well, like, the government, they do, I guess, I'm trying to balance too, you know, trying to balance too, that we are lucky enough to be surrounded by a lot of conservation and we don't have a lot of room to go out, and so, um, and I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with. But I see, it's just, I'm just trying to figure out a balance, because we're not gonna have, be able to, because what people think worth tall buildings is sprawl.
Sprawl.
So it's like finding a balance.
But no matter which direction that you come into our town, you've never seen buildings existing above the trees, and that is nice.
Like I said, New York City used to have a building height of thirty-five feet.
Okay.
And it's very.
Okay.
And through our primary commercial?
Thirty-five feet, highway commercial.
So we just have thirty-five feet to, for the height, that's the only thing we need to change on that. Okay, that's number one, and are we comfortable with thirty-five there?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And then C one?
So.
That's commercial.
Highway commercial, it's highway commercial, um.
H C.
H C, and so I would actually like to see the reduced, um, frontage from fifty feet to twenty feet.
Wait, on H C, would, would.
Right.
You're trying to change the height, like, it's the only thing.
Yeah, I think reducing, so this might actually help us out, because there are two parcels that are zone highway commercial. It's actually next to the Van Mouten Inn, and then on Clark Street, um, and I think those folks on Clark Street, there is no highway commercial, but they don't have it from Clark Street, they don't have enough, that's where variance would work out for them, because, or they would have a hardship, you can, they don't have, have to go fifty feet and then build, so, and then.
So are we gonna change, is it what we got on there for that one project?
Well, not on that one project, but there's another lot, and then there's also all this stuff up here, it is, and it's town hall, it's zone highway commercial, the cavernous gallery, and ultimately, we, uh, we gotta look at redevelopment, if it's like, they wanna redevelop those, it would actually be nicer if they were actually closer to the road, and then had more of a downtown feel, it's more walkable that way, so if we can reduce the burden on them, like that fifty feet, I think they can get there.
So you think twenty?
Yeah, fifteen or twelve, so they can put it to the side.
Or in back?
Or in back.
So they move the building to the front, and I agree, because that's more likely down.
Exactly, yeah, and it keeps, yeah, you know, because when, yeah, we're going with the same thing.
Fifteen or twenty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
There might be a restriction from the highway department, isn't there, there's no limit on it, but there was something.
Well, the right way.
Yeah, the right, you can't build up to the right way, but you can go fifteen, yeah, so.
Side yards, are we good with everything else?
Uh, let's see, side yard, twenty-five feet, I mean, I would take that down to fifteen.
You've got to drive back to your apartment.
Yeah. Well, though, though, with, though, they'll have, they'll have their own logistics to work out, because they also have parking loading requirements, so that's gonna be how they wanna do it on their design, whether they wanna have in the center, or they wanna shift to the side.
And your?
Um, I think twenty, and then the street frontage, fifty feet, height thirty-five. And so, and then the commercial industrial, where these areas are.
Is that the burger for the?
I think it's.
Future?
Yeah. You shut. And that's really an entrance to our town, to this area that.
And then there's another one over. Can we scroll down now? No.
No.
We're not, keep going, we're not, that's the end of the map.
Yeah.
That's the end of the map.
So it's, um, so it's right there where the auto body is, and.
Lowering in.
Lowering in.
There's a bowling alley in there.
I guess the bowling alley is technically in there, let's see. Fifty feet, and it. Let's also look at, so this gives us a better idea of what is allowed in that district.
I'm willing to have you revisit the state right away, why on either side of the pavement, because it is restrictive all along there, they do not want to do anything that would be there right away.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, this is the corner of the bowling alley by about eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Coming around and turn.
Don't need this.
That's what I mean, right, right.
Okay, so why don't we just, just finish, yeah, let's, I'm sorry, I didn't even, I've been looking at the table, I wasn't looking at the timing.
So if we want them to continue to be fifty feet at our front yard, twenty-five, size twenty-five rear.
And then the street frontage.
Hundred feet?
Yeah, I guess they, if they're gonna have a front yard, well, if they're gonna have a side yard, it's twenty-five, I guess it would have to be a hundred feet, so they can build something, but.
And then there's about a foot tall.
Yeah, and then with this, we can then submit this to, um, the planners for review, and to see if their thoughts are, if there are any other text amendment things, but they can get down. Any other, any other thoughts on setbacks?
I think we're. Can we ask to Alex to start working on our.
Um, I think that would be Cushion Chirrell. I think, yeah, and well, I like.
Is this a map? I can keep the map, take the map.
I think that's where we need to work, and we work together as a community, this map has that extended extra jurisdictional areas that we don't administer, um, but we made one, we like my lodge, and administer this highway commercial entrances, because that has a big impact.
That was an.
Yeah, I guess, taking my daughter, my lodge as a example, so, which I think were very similar, and, um, you know, they're close to the cars, demographics, all that kind of thing, and they think we're doing fairly well over there, so that we can not reinvent, you know, reinvent the wheel and take them to get, and that's gonna make it.
Yeah, and we have our own tech, we're gonna start.
Tech.
We're gonna start. We'll check your file here. All right. Good night, good night to you.
Good night. We didn't ever get the short-term rentals.
By way of the state about.
I appreciate your input.
Impact fees, I tell you.
They do.
If, if you.
It's hard, yeah.
Well, I know that they changed a lot, what did they change that you couldn't do stuff for affordable housing, they changed something for that impact piece of that, or something?
Yeah, it was something along that line.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the word is, but I don't know, how do people feel about that, I don't wanna.
Development should pay their way.
Okay.
The city couldn't own the property for affordable housing or something like that, or.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, but like, some of the impact fees, like, in both, where I have it pulled up, there's a speed control.
Well, I think, I think that having impact fees is important, though.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're changing the, the whole landscape of us, and so, I think they need to pay.
Okay, that's fair enough, I just don't want, but people are like, oh, my God, you're.
Say it was our idea, then you're out of the firing line.
You know, what side of the coin are you on?
Yeah, no.
Building a house, you don't want any of that.
Yeah, not for houses, but commercial, because they're bringing traffic, they're, they're using.
But so, but so are our houses, residential, I mean, yeah, it was interesting to meet a friend who lives out in Palm Heart Meadows, you know, they passed that you can't, which we didn't make it to tonight, and I don't think we're bad, but we definitely need to look at them as the short-term rentals, they, you know, said you can have short-term rentals, and they cited traffic, and she was like, I run in and out of here five times a day, way more than any vacation rental is gonna do, because I'm dropping off kids, picking up kids, taking up, so, it's interesting.